Hello and welcome. This is Town Council Work Session. This is our first capital improvement budget meeting. The date is January 4th and the time is 6:50, so our apologies for starting a little bit late. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The agenda tonight is we're going to go through Mr. Alfred's budget message and debt service schedules, long-term financial programs, general municipal programs, and proposed capital budget, general municipal and utilities programs, and the town manager's proposed capital improvement plan. And then at that time, after we finish the dialogue here at the table, we will take comments from the public, that's why it's a public work session, and any other matters of interest and concern. So, welcome, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Alfred.
In addition to those comments, I would note that tomorrow evening, January 5th, the council will again be meeting in Work Session to review the long-term financial program as well as the recreation and open space program proposals. And then on January 11th, at 6:30 again, council will meet in joint session with the school committee to review the school's capital improvement program that has been proposed through the school committee. Start out with the... For those in the audience, there are copies of the slides available. Council has those. I will try to reference the page within the capital improvement program that I'm dealing with with the different slides. The first is, why do we develop the capital improvement program? And there's really three components. One is to provide a comprehensive community need statement. Secondly, to provide a prioritized implementation schedule for meeting those needs. And third, to provide the financial data relative to the community's ability to finance the costs associated with those defined needs. The focus of the capital improvement program is to review the capital projects, provide full justification, and to answer questions that either the council or the public may have. Our objective has also been, over the past four years, is to reduce debt service costs by reducing or delaying future bond projects. We're also looking to identify all municipal lead projects regardless of where their funding sources are. A number of the projects that are presented this evening will require third-party funding sources, either in the form of grants or other revenue sources. With that, we would... We will present the entire dollar amount of the projects, even though many of those dollars are covered through third-party funding. And as we go through the detailed list, we'll document what those third-party funding assumptions are in the development of the program. The capital improvement program is governed by the capital budget ordinance. Capital budget ordinance looks at capital facilities and infrastructure and refers to all capital facilities such as streets, bridges, water, sewer systems, parks, and wastewater treatment facilities. Capital projects or improvements are normally of a non-reoccurring nature with a fixed asset value in excess of $10,000. You will see several items that are below that that are reoccurring, yet those are fund transfers going to capital reserves for projects that require multi-year funding. The... On page two of the document is a summary of the capital improvement program for the 2012-2013 year with a comparison to what was adopted by the council for the current 11-12 year. As you can see, program costs are proposed to go down $625,000 in the open space program. In addition, we're looking at reducing bonding efforts, new bonding efforts within the open space program. In the current year, it was at $1 million. We're proposing no bonding authorization in the 2012-2013 year through 2017-18. Recreation programs are down about $248,000, and I'll give explanations on those. Same with the general municipal programs. We're looking at also reducing the bonding effort, which was at $3.5 million, down to $2.5 million in the 10-11 year. I beg your pardon, the 11-12 year. On the school programs, it's really unchanged from what had been presented in the... Presented and adopted in the 11-12 year. On the capital budget pay-as-you-go portion, this is the component of the general fund as well as the various enterprise funds or school fund. The overall program is up $151,000 if approved by the council as presented. Point of reference is that the school department's request for capital improvements proposes a $290,000 program up from $170,000 or $120,000 increase. That is going to be the subject of discussion when the council meets with the school committee. I would note that in the 10-11 year, there was a capital budget of $220,000. Last year, in 11-12, there was $170,000. So, the increase that we're looking at this year is substantial if it were to remain as presented. I think the key change in the school funds, funding proposals, is the proposal to provide for track rehabilitation at Curtis Corner at a cost of approximately $130,000. That was not a part of the adopted budget for the current year. So, when we look at the annual funding element and the bonding element, we're looking at a total program of approximately $32.3 million, down about $770,000 from what the current year is. Moving on to page four of the budget message, what I've done on this page is to provide a detail of all of the projects that are included and compared them to the adopted dollar amounts for the six-year program in the existing year, and have provided a description of where the changes have occurred. Again, what we're looking at is delaying projects, particularly those that are bond associated by one additional year to get past the Great Recession that we have been involved with for the past two years. We're also looking at new projects such as at Marina Park, where that project would be wholly funded through a grant that would be made available through the Department of Environmental Management. We're also looking at program changes such as the beach pavilion relocation, which is becoming a necessity to be moved up on the schedule of capital needs. In terms of general financial programs, the information technology program will be up about $500,000, and we'll talk about that with the need for us to redevelop financial management system and to purchase new software that would run all of our financial systems, inclusive of the utility funds, school fund, Peacedale Office Building, or the Guild. Each of those would be contributing toward the overall project cost for that software We'll go through each of the projects individually, so I won't dwell on this page any longer. Moving on to the statistical section of the budget document, we're presenting the population growth again. This is the first time we've had census data since 2000. We are marked at the 30,639. I thought it was more important, and again, this chart is on page 11 of your document, to show the census information by age groups, because I think that this is an important slide for consideration as far as what future needs of the community will be associated based on the populations that we will be serving. As you can see, the age 14 or less, we're looking at approximately a 33% reduction from 2000 in the number of persons residing within the community age 14 or less. 10-year change of a loss of 917 individuals. Conversely, what we're seeing is an increase in the population age 15 to 24. That's directly related to what we believe were inaccurate counts on those students at URI that were living in group quarters in 2000, where you can see you've got a 70% increase or 1,926 people. Most of that is directly tied to the university. The other major group of interest is the age 60 and over, where we're seeing a major increase in that population as well. So, we've got a total increase of 2,718 over the 10-year period. The persons in group quarters, this is again directly related to the URI population. We went from 4,000 up to 5,281, so we had a major increase of 1,278 individuals. That's where we're seeing the growth within the 15 to 24 range. And when you look at the population living in group quarters, that's up substantially as well. So, I think that this is important information, where we're seeing less children within the community as well as more senior adults over age 60. This will have impact both within the school programs itself and also as far as the urgency in terms of program needs for servicing the elder population. Moving along, as far as... On page 12 of the document, median single-family housing cost, you can see there's been a dip since the 2005-2006 years. I think a better presentation is on the next slide. Let's go in the right direction. Which looks at the values. What we're seeing is the average assessment values were up as high as $422,000 on single-family homes. That's now down to $347,000. This chart also shows the tax effort that's necessary in each of the years. And you can see that property taxes on the median family house was at $5,095 three years ago. It went down to $49,140. I want to note, there really isn't a decrease of $181, because this looks only at the real estate value. If you recall, in the 2010-2011 year, we reduced the $6,000 down to $500 and picked up a major increase in motor vehicle costs to the taxpayer. So, when you net out the value, that really stated around the $5100 level. The 11-12 year, the value stated around a 2.48% increase or $5,036. So, we have been able to flatten out the increases in the tax levy for the residential homes, particularly over the past three years. The next page, which is referenced on page 13, is really a restatement. It looks at the... Where the property taxes on a single household are going. Again, in the 12 year, it was at 3,888 on school purpose and municipal purpose at $1,4148. The community factors that I'm showing on this next slide on page 13 of the document looks at the unemployment. I've updated this for November. The... At this point, the unemployment rate in South Kingston is at 9.2%. In looking at the real numbers that we're looking at is that we have a labor force right now of 15,895 people, but only 14,432 of those are employed. So, at this point, there's 1,463 individuals statistically are presented as unemployed or 9.2% of our labor force. Since the 2007 year, we've seen the labor force drop from about 16,100 down to the 15,900, if you will. That's a substantial reduction in the amount of labor force availability. It also goes to many of the state problems that we see with the reduction in revenues going to the state based on income tax, because there's less earnings occurring. And South Kingston is certainly but a microcosm of what the overall state impact has been with this recession. But the 9.2%, as you can see, is substantially higher than the average 4% to 4.5% during good economic times. It will probably take us at least another four years to get back to that 4.4%, 4.5% rate based on the way the market is developing. The next chart on page 14 is the taxable property roll. And I think this is an important consideration, because it shows what the revaluations have done with the community. In the revaluation that occurred for December 31 of 2006, we hit a $5.2 billion tax roll. That increased to 5.25 in the 8-9 year and 5.281 in the 9-10 year. The revaluation that occurred for December 31 of 2009 lost $855 million in taxable property. And we have seen really just a stabilization of the tax roll since that revaluation occurred. There will be another revaluation that will be required, because they're required every third year in the 2013-2014 year. To give you an idea, looking at the tax roll in a different way, this chart on page 14 looking... I'll say it's referenced to page 14, looks at what the rate of loss was in the 2010-11 year, which was the $855 million. And then what has the growth been subsequent to that? In 11-12, we saw a .23, and looking forward to the 12-13 year, we're looking at probably almost half of that type of growth. Unless we see changes in the next three months, my anticipated growth will be around... It'll be around $20 million, which is what it was last year on the buildings. It'll be a loss of about $16 million in the tangible property. This is the dollars that we anticipate will be lost on equipment and principally computers at APC, as that site is redeveloped into a research facility rather than a manufacturing concern. So, at this point, we're assuming that in 12-13, we'll see a stabilization of the roll, but really no appreciable growth. Budget trends. I think the most important things to look at here is that if you look at the beginning of the chart in the 08-09 year, 84.2% of our budget for the general fund was coming from property tax. It's now up to 88.4% in the 11-12 year. Conversely, when you look at the state aid, the state aid on the general fund was worth over 7% in the 08-09 year, and it's now down to 3.2% in the 11-12 year. Same holds true with the school fund. Revenues again were at 80%. They go up to 82% for the property tax, yet the state aid is from the 17.6% down to 15. And when you look at the combined revenue statements, what we're seeing is really a flip-flop. That which has been lost in the state aid has also required the additional property tax effort. It is... The next page, which is also budget trends, looks at the growth in the tax levy over the last four years. And you can see we were growing in the 08-09 year at 5%. For the next three years, we've grown at 1.2%, 1.5%, and 0.95%. Yet, at the same time, the value on the municipal programs has escalated from about 19% to 22.5%. The reason for that, again, is the loss on the state aid. Not all is bleak when we look at the budgets. The budgets for the 08-09 year for the municipal expenditure program was $86.2 million. That which was adopted by the council was $83.6 million in the 11-12 year. So, there has been substantial reductions made in the municipal programs in an effort to be able to meet the reductions, both in new taxable growth and the reductions in the level of state aid coming to the community. Next shot is a presentation of the 16 programs involved within the long-term capital project and the various funding sources. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at if all these projects were completed within the dollar amounts anticipated, we'd spend $20,000,40,000. But of that dollar amount, approximately $9.25 million would be coming from new bonds that would be issued over the course of the six years. Yet, the remaining dollar amounts would be coming from secured funds. Secured funds, for the most part, are dollars that have been set aside to capital reserve funds or dollars that are anticipated to be a part of the pay-as-you-go portion of the capital budget, where we're reserving dollars in a given year for expenditure in a future year, as well as grants or municipal impact fees. The impact fees that are shown here are recreation impact fees for the three projects that are listed there that would be used. School impact fees are not shown on this chart, because they're used to pay down debt once the... And the total debt is shown here. So, you've got, in the schools, $3.6 million in new bonding requirements. However, with that $3.6 million, you'll be seeing some offset of approximately $200,000 a year from revenues that come forward to service that debt from the school-related impact fees. When we look at the bonds to be issued, we are also looking at $1 million in general in neighborhood guild, where the entire debt service would be paid for through guild trust funds. And we're looking at 40% of the school bonds being reimbursed through the State Department of Education. So, of those $9.25 million, a goodly portion, over $2 million of that will be through third-party funding. Moving on, as far as the general obligation bonds that are anticipated over the six years, and this is shown on page 30, as well as the chart that's on the board, we're looking at deferring the neighborhood guild to the 2014-15 year, as well as the road programs for $2 million and the schools for $1 million. We're also looking at the 16-17 year, where we place the... As a placeholder, the school, the community gymnasium at $3.15 million. We would also have another municipal road project of $500,000, and the schools for $6,000. The 17-18 year is a placeholder for the schools of $1 million. Right now, it carries dollars for retrofit of the electric heating systems at the Mattoonik and West Kingston schools. However, there's been no detailed studies done by the school department as to whether those prices are realistic or whether the $1 million would be sufficient to be able to meet those needs. That will have to be firmed up as we go forward in future capital improvement program As far as the bonding schedule is concerned, the chart on page 30 of your capital budget is presented on the board. What we're looking at is that we would need to have Town Council authorization in advance of... In the session, the general assembly session for 2014, to have referendum placed on the November 2014 ballot for the approval of $3.7 million in bonds, 2.1 for road and bridges, as well as a $1,006 for the schools. All of the other bonds are adding up to the $9.25 million have already previously been authorized by the voters. I wanted to give you a look at the past municipal bonding history, and I'd ask you to jump to page 63 in the budget document, if you're following along from that document. The 2003 showed that we had bonded indebtedness of $41.7 million. That had increased to $41.8 million in 2006 and is down as of 2012 to $22.8 million. So, there's been an $18.9 million reduction over a nine-year period. This is about 45.3% reduction. That's a substantial reduction. Most times, the rating agencies are looking for a 10%... A 50% decrease over a 10-year period on outstanding debt. But this chart not only shows the outstanding debt, but the incurrence of additional debt as we go forward. But we have been able to successfully reduce the bonding requirements within the community and to reduce the debt service, which then puts less pressure on the property tax base. When we look at the debt level on a per capita basis, it was as high as $1,428, and now is down as low as $724, also a substantial change for us. On page 64 of the document, we talk about the projected gross bonded debt level. And this is looking at adding the $9.25 million in to the debt level as we go forward, and still being able to see a reduction from where we are at the current time at the $22 million level, where we will take that down to approximately a $15 million level in the 18-19 year. Again, these charts are adjusted on a yearly basis. That's why the historic charts are more important than the look forward, because they actually prove what you have been able, as a council, to accomplish. Page 64 of the document breaks out the capital projects by major program function, where we're seeing open space would be having about $425,000 in new purchases over the six-year period. The recreation programming would be worth about 33% of what we're speaking about over the next three nights. General municipal programs at 52%. Bonding requirements, again, we're showing you where the $9,250,000 would be needed. When we move on to page 65, I've provided you with substantial detail on third-party revenue sources that offset costs associated with the capital programs. And the listings are there. There's a narrative explanation on each of these, where we're still receiving library construction aid, school building construction aid, fair shaft fees, the neighborhood guild, which reimburses us on any bonding that occurs at the guild. We're also looking at the wastewater expansion, when we put in both the Middle Bridge System and the Kingston System, where we placed liens on the properties. So, we're receiving those reimbursements on the debt service. We also are using real estate conveyance tax receipts as a means of paying down debt on open space. Water system, we're also paying that through the rate base within the water system. And with the super fund program, we're making transfers out of the super fund program, which still has approximately $1 million in assets available to it. When we look at the impact of the capital program... When we look at the impact of the capital program debt associated over the next six-year period, we're currently looking at of the overall tax rate in the 2011, 2012 year, about 64 cents being necessary, and this is on page 68, about 64 cents being necessary on the average house. And we're expecting that to drop to about 40 cents, even with the $9.25 million that would be incurred in new debt over the six-year term. So about a $76 per household drop, even with those changes occurring within the overall On page 69, we start with the various components that are reviewed essentially by the Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, or the various rating agencies. These are the type of considerations that they're looking at. One is the debt service as a percentage of a 2% levy growth. We would see it go from about 6.8% down to 3.8. I'd also make reference to the fact that what I'm showing you is both gross bonded debt service and net debt service. The difference between these two is the gross is before the third-party revenues are subtracted. The net is what the debt service is that truly comes out of the property tax base. So you can see that right now, property taxes in the 11, 12 year are paying about 4% of the overall levy, and that'll drop to about 2.24% in the 18, 19 year if the program were constructed as presented. The next page, and I'll reference page 70, is bonded debt as a percentage of the tax base. Moody's looks at the ratings as anything that is above, below 1.6%. And we're well below the 1.6. AA communities are at 1.95 as far as the 2008 study that was last done by Moody's in terms of looking at various benchmarks. So again, we're well below those. This is a chart which is of a concern, because when we look at assessed value per capita, when you look at the major decrease that we saw, the $855 million reduction in taxable property, what we're seeing is that the assessment ratio to the number of persons within the community has dropped below 150,000. And the 150,000 is really a benchmark that you want to -- that the rating agencies are interested in. We're certainly well within the range for the 150,000 per person, yet at the same time, we're on the low side of it at this point, where we had been as high as 175,000. When we deal with the rating agencies, we certainly have to make reference to the changes that occur because of revaluations. Debt per capita, again, going from about $731 down to $442. Again, the benchmark on this would be anything below $2,000, anything above $2,000 is a warning sign or a concern. On page 71, per capita debt as a percentage of per capita income. The average in Rhode Island in 2008, which is the last reference point we have, was about 5.65%. And we're in the area of 2%, heading down toward 1% in the latter years of the program. Again, very strong financial position. The debt service as a percentage of operating revenues is shown on page 72. Standard &amp; Poor's and Moody's look at a range of between 7 and 8.2%. And again, we're well below those standards. The existing debt retirement, if we borrowed, if we did not borrow any additional money, any of the $9.25 million, that has been integrated into the capital program as presented this evening. We would see the overall debt from 2012, which is, right now, stands at 22.8 million, and it would be down to 8.3 million. I'm not recommending that, but I'm showing you that the amount of debt retirement is still substantially strong as we go forward. The next chart looks at the projected bonded debt level with the $9.25 million incorporated into the market. Again, what we're showing here is about an $8.2 million reduction, or about 36%, even though we're building in an additional $9.25 million over that six-year period. Again, well manageable within the means of this community. Last chart looks at the undesignated fund balance. We've talked about this at various budget sessions. We are looking at the audit that was just completed for June 30 of 2011, a $9.3 million undesignated fund balance, of which 12, which is equal to about 12.7% of the 2011, 2012 municipal budget. If we had a $450,000 surplus for the 11, 12 year, and that is a very conservative estimate at this point, our objective would be to increase that surplus position. We would still be in excess of 11.5% when we close the 11, 12, 12, 13 year. So again, we have the necessary financial resources to stay ahead of budgetary concerns. Now, it's interesting to note that one of the major problems that East Providence is looking at at this point is the fact that they need to have tax anticipation notes, and they're going month to month. They're not only having to borrow money, but they're also having to pay for the value of that money during the time that they borrow. So what you have is the dollars available where those are invested. Certainly, investment rates are at an all-time low. However, you're not paying additional dollars to hire the, hire money. And when communities such as the Central Falls or the East Providencees get to a point where the tax anticipation notes are no longer available because they're at junk bond level, that's when the communities are at a position where capital improvement programs really have to be sidelined. Preventative maintenance disappears, and you see the community resources, infrastructure suffer as a result of it. Maintaining the fund balance and never having to deal with tax anticipation notes is a hallmark of a well-financed community and one that I think we should be proud of. Want to move on now to the long-term capital projects, and this takes you back to page 41. I know I'm jumping around, but in trying to have some semblance of order here, I need to go from finances to finances and then back to projects itself. The first project that we're dealing with this evening on page 41 is the transportation improvement program. And there's several funding sources that include the general obligation bonds, annual funding through the pay-as-you-go portion of the capital budget, as well as operating budget transfers at the end of the year. If we have little snow or no snow, and we have surplus dollars available from that snow budget, those dollars would then be transferred into the transportation program as a means of being able to accelerate infrastructure enhancements. The capital transportation projects look at six areas. One is arterial and collector road reconstruction. A new program that we're really introducing this year is the local road pavement overlay. This is to get away from having to reconstruct the entire road on less-than-primary roads. This is where we would go in and do less work at a more efficient cost as a means of being able to cover more territory and be able to enhance or improve more of our road network. It also looks at drainage infrastructure, which, when we talk drainage infrastructure, for the most part, this is TMDL requirements, where we're looking at about $100,000 a year that'll be necessary to have reserves set asides for addressing those needs in the future. Sidewalk construction is really minimal at this point, and the public works facility improvements, if necessary. When we look at the program comparison between the 12 and the 13 year, we're down about $600,000 in proposed expenditures and revenues. A portion of that is a $1 million reduction in the bonding program that's been proposed from 3.5 down to 2.5 million. The expenditure program is broken out into the various items that I've already noted. We're going to go through those piece by piece. The public works infrastructure program looks at spending the $7.6 million. We are going to be spending more money than we're budgeting on several of the years because we're going to be using dollars held in the capital reserve for the road improvement projects. So let's move on to the road improvement programs. We're dealing with the road reconstruction, the overlay program, stormwater, and bridges. The first program is dealing with the road reconstruction. This is where we will need to have a full reclamation with a two-and-a-half-inch binder and a one-and-a-half-finished asphalt surface. This is where there really is no road base in existence now. Many of the roads in South Kingston and really in most rural areas are copaths that were later became dust control roads, and after dust control became stone seal roads or sand seal roads. Many of those roads have no subsurface. Therefore, if you were to just simply go in and to repair the road by putting a, an inch and a half of asphalt, you would end up with the roads decaying in a very quick manner. What we're looking at is the Stony Fort Road would be about a $250,000 project fall construction is anticipated on that, and that's on page 43. The next program, as I previously referenced, is the road overlay program. And this is looking at pavement overlay consisting of a bituminous concrete leveling course finished with a one-and-a-half-inch bituminous. The method is subject to reflective cracking. Our anticipation is that we will get eight to 12 years, but with the road sealing, oil sealing of the roads, we feel that this is a better investment on some of the less-traveled roads in the community that still serve major populations. Roads that are anticipated for this type of service would be Torrey Road, which is about $115,400, $115,400 is forecasted cost. Chanack Road at $331,000. And Plains Road between Flag and Stony Fort for another $228,000. As you can see from the pictures, this is the type of roads that we're dealing with that need to have the leveling cost put in place and then the final coat of inch and a half of asphalt. The local road overlay projects, we're looking at the generals streets, Pershing, Magathah, Eisenhower. All of those streets are in deplorable condition at this time. The last time those roads were dealt with was probably in the mid-'70s with sewer construction. At that time, those roads were overlaid. So we're seeing an overlay on a road that has lasted in excess of 35 years. Certainly, there has been seal cracking that's been done on those roads, but we believe that we will be able to make a major dent in some of these residential areas by concentrating on the overlay projects. Overlay projects that are listed here on the board right now would total about $234,000 in expense that we would do during the 12, 13 year, and that's on page 44. The next component of the transportation and public works programming is the TMDL implementation. Council's fully aware that we have done engineering studies that have been completed. We have to stop instituting best management practices where warranted. What we are planning on doing is putting aside, as we did in the current year budget, approximately $100,000 a year that would be made available for these type of program, to meet these type of program needs. The bridge element of the transportation program, which is on page 44, looks at one major repair that we'll be looking at for a three-year program. That three-year program would be repair work on the Church Street Bridge. We're anticipating that that repair job will cost about $75,000 in the initial year, but we'll be setting monies aside and beginning the engineering studies for the, for what exactly needs to be done as far as the fortification of that and the fixing of the, of that stone arch. That's an important bridge because it's a historical structure and is in need of yearly annual maintenance, but there is going to be a need for a major structure review and improvements. So that'll be funded over the 13, 14, and 15 fiscal years, and the work would be completed in 2015. That concludes the road transportation. The next project that's listed is the land bank reserve. There's $750,000 that was made available by voters for the purchase of municipal land for land banking purposes. This is not for open space purpose, but rather for any other municipal needs that the council would direct land to be acquired for, to be held in land bank. The last major property that the town acquired, obviously, was Savio Property. That was purchased in 2010 with about $702,000. A portion of that was with grants that came from Champlin Foundation and DEM, and about half of the cost was paid for through land dedication funds. So at this point, we're not anticipating any purchases. However, it's important to note that the council has the ability to be able to actively purchase property if, in fact, they see it in the municipal interest. Next item is the facilities renovations with Kingston Library. I think the council's aware, that's a two-year program. The first year of the program was completed this year, which was the replacing and staining of shingles on the Belfry and the Manson roof. And that was about an $80,000 item. We're now looking at Trim and Clavord painting that will be done in the 2012, 13 year at a cost of about $220,000. All of the funds were available for that, either through Champlin Foundation or through capital budget transfers into that reserve account to be able to complete this, this job. So we're looking at the remaining $25,000 in the 2012, 13 capital budget for the pay-as-you-go to be able to provide final funding for completion of this most important project. Next project is the property revaluation program. The council provided authorization for budget transfers last year to be able to provide for the full funding of the mass appraisal, which is required for December 31 of 2012. So all dollars are available for the next full revaluation. The estimated cost is $752,000. Those monies are held in balance at this point. We will be going, in fact, we are out to bid this week for requests for proposals for revaluation companies to submit. I believe there's seven companies that are certified in the state that would be able to submit proposals. Certainly, any proposal that was received outside of the existing revale software that we use would have to be able to interface with that software and be able to extract, extract the data so that we would have an ability to be able to manage under the new system all of the old data from prior years. We're also required with revaluation to have a statistical revale done within the six-year period. The next statistical will have to be completed by 12, 31, or 15. We're anticipating that the cost on that would be $231,000. And what we're looking at is budget transfers in the 14, 15, and 15, 16 years of $50,000 apiece to be able to provide the full funding that'll be necessary for that project. What we don't want to do is to wait until the 15, 16 year and then have a full $100,000 requirement in that pay-as-you-go portion of the capital budget, and that's on page 48. Also on page 48 is the town hall facilities. Right now, we're holding about $185,000 in the town hall capital reserve. We We are forwarding on an annual basis about $50,000 to $55,000 that would come out of the Town Hall account, the operating account, if those dollars were available, and we're also looking at additional budgetary transfers. Items that we are looking to do over the next several years is, one, the dormer repairs here within the council chambers. We've got heating system improvements that are necessary in different portions of the building. We also have painting and carpeting needs. Parking lot here also needs to have improvements made with either some type of a ceiling or some type of overlay. One of the projects that we'd like to have eventually completed would be the installation of a generator. This building is without power if there is a power interruption with the grid. We're anticipating that it would cost approximately $40,000 to have that installed here of proper size. That would also be important for us to be able to continue to manage our IT systems as well as to be able to maintain service levels if there are extended outages. We would also like to see a sprinkler system installed in the basement. There is a great deal of paper storage that's in that basement area, and certainly, a sprinkler system would help us prevent events like we had four years ago. Moving on with the municipal planning program. The planning program still holds about $109,000 in the reserve fund. Over the next several years, and this was included in the current-year program, is we're looking at and recommending community survey work to be completed. As the community grows, as it ages, as its demographics change, as its financial positions change, it's important for us to know what are people satisfied with, what are they not satisfied with, what is it that the town should be providing or that it's not providing, or what are we doing well? What we're looking at is hopefully being able to get the survey underway in the '12- '13 year. The first one for about $19,000. The second one, which would really be a report card on how well you did in terms of addressing what the first survey showed you in the '16-, '17-year. What I've also incorporated this year into the municipal planning program is those costs associated with GIS website programming and with hardware. We have traditionally had that as a pay-as-you-go component of the capital budget. The dollars are available within the Capital Reserve rather than pushing for tax dollar increases to be able to service GIS needs. We've got approximately $21,000 that we're anticipating use. In the '12-'13 year, we would be looking at about $21,000. Part of that is for the replacement of the lodge scanner that's used by Public Works as well as the GIS department. We're also be upgrading software. An interesting note, the state has just made available new aerial photography, which is of high resolution, which hopefully will be available on our website within the next week. So we continue to have, I think, you know, a major commitment to GIS, and GIS has really integrated itself into most of our municipal departments, and I think that we can continue to try to fund that through the planning program itself. Moving on, the Municipal Energy Conservation Program was first introduced to the council in the last year, and it's on page 50 and 51 of your budget document. The program would be totally funded through dollars made available through stimulus grant of about $273,000, as well as a demonstration grant for another $52,000. Essentially, the town has about $328,000 that it can expend for energy conservation programming. Let me talk about the different programs that we've been involved with. The council authorized, and we've implemented, an investment-grade audit. That's being completed this year and will be done probably within the next month. I've seen the preliminary report. I've asked for some revisions on it, and hopefully, we'll have a final product that the council can review in February. The cost of that audit was $32,000. That cost will be waived if, in fact, we implement the recommendations presented. Essentially, what the ESCO company, the Energy Services Company, does is to review all of the buildings for its power management, lighting systems, building automation systems, mechanical plant, as well as the building envelopes and what a conservation potential. It looks at each of those and then looks at what the cost of capital improvement would be to be able to reduce the energy cost. Theoretically, the amount of money that's saved in energy would then be able to be used to pay the capital costs associated with debt incurred to be able to complete those improvements. All municipal buildings inclusive of the schools have been evaluated. The report that's been presented could suggest as much as $4 to $5 million, which I think is much higher than what I would support, but once we see the overall report, we'll give a recommendation on how to address it. Because essentially, what we would be asking to do is outside of the capital improvement program is to authorize some type of bonding authorization specifically for energy conservation purpose. It would not impact the municipal budget because we would see reductions in the cost of electricity or heating fuels or gas that was being used in the various buildings as a means of paying that debt service. So essentially, you would be taking, if you had a $20,000 energy budget, if it then went down to $18,000, that $2,000 in savings would be used to pay the cost of the debt service. Some of the recommendations that any ESCO company is going to make are going to have capital costs where the buyback or the energy savings would take in excess of 15 or 20 years. To me, that's far too long because it's going to outlive the capital asset value itself, its useful life. Once we get the study, we'll sit, we'll have a presentation that'll be provided for the council with the consultant as well as the management position on that. We also have, as I said, about $300,000 that we can use to make energy improvements without having to bond anything, because those dollars would be made available through the ERA grant that's available to the town, which is about $300,000. We are working with the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources at this time as far as the administration of that grant. A portion of that would be spent for the $32,000 on the audit that's been completed if, in fact, we were not to exercise and approve any of the contracts that would be under consideration. We're also working with three communities, East Greenwich, North Providence, and Warwick, with a URI grant for, providing for energy conservation and training. This program has made available to all of the residents within the community free energy audits on their residential homes with recommendations on what type of improvements they could make to reduce their energy consumption and the carbon footprint. We'll also be looking at doing additional training with building managers to act as in the development of strategic energy plans for each of the municipal buildings. So that grant, I think, has been helpful to the town, and it will provide some administrative money that will assist us in offsetting some of the capital costs associated with improvements that we may plan.
So it will go to local residents, so there's no, is there cap or a financial range that, of course, necessarily?
No, they are free. In fact, they had come to me. They've done the energy audit on my house. Teresa Tansy had it done as well. We've made those results known in terms of the different types of things that can be done. Anyone who's interested with the program can contact the planning department, and we can put them in touch with the grant folks, and they can schedule for the energy audits. In fact, we'd had that in the newspaper probably three months ago. Moving on to pages 53 and 54 on the Information Technology Program. This program is a major change from the current year. The substantial change that's occurring is in the need for the town to develop a new software program or actually to purchase new software for all our financial management systems. What we are intending on doing is doing a needs assessment at this time of how we can integrate all of the different needs. The software that we use at this point was first introduced in about 1985. It was called Admins. The program, also, we had a full-time person that was an Admins programmer. Admins is, at this point, changed where they are providing for PAC systems where there is little flexibility in terms of individualized programming. What that means to us is that we end up with a situation where many of the financial programs that we're operating with, we don't have the same flexibility that we've had in the past, and the technical support, both from the owners of the software and the in-house staff, are becoming more limited. What we're looking at is called Energy Resource Planning Systems, and essentially, what that is, is a program of integrated software that will look, and if you look at page 53, all of the different components. It'll deal with our general ledger, budget preparation, purchasing, asset management, payroll, treasury functions like banking and investment tracking, tax collection, as well as human resources, and our billing systems for utilities and a number of different things. There's, I've listed 15 of the items there that need software integration. Probably eight of those would be independent systems, and the other seven would be an integrated system. Right now, our budget preparation is done through the manager's office on a Excel spreadsheet. It's not integrated through the payroll package, so what we have to do is to bring into the Excel programming all of our human service requirements, whether it's benefits or salary. The data manipulation has become more difficult as we've gone forward. The first step would be to do a needs assessment. Second step would be to then put together a request for proposal, and third would be to look at which items we wanted within the proposal to be integrated and which would be standalone systems. And a number of them, as I say, can be standalone systems as long as the data transfers are available through a database management programming. We expect that the overall cost will be in the area of $600,000. That's a placeholder at this time. The cost could, in fact, exceed $600,000, or they could be less. A lot of it depends on what we see. In Rhode Island, there's probably three to five companies that are providing public-sector packages that are, have been deemed efficient and are recommended by those various communities. We need to look at those and find out what the best fit would be for South Kingstown. It's important to note that the overall cost would then have to be spread across each of the various funds. So water, wastewater, transfer station, Peacedale Offices, Guild, School Fund. Each would be using this for administration of their programs, their financial management. Therefore, they would, we would cede costs to each of those programs based on proportionality that they have in terms of the data management. So we would be looking at the school department contributing to the program as well as the utilities. We would also want the school department's financial people to be involved with the review of the various systems. Because Rhode Island has set up for the school departments a uniform chart of accounts, which is really independent of what you see nationally, if we were to go with companies that are not already integrated into the Rhode Island market, we would probably see major programming cost to be able to integrate and provide the data to the state at the level that they need it at at this point or they've required it at. We're also anticipating on the municipal side that a uniform chart of accounts will most likely be directed through state government within the next few years. It's interesting that what the state is attempting to do is to set up uniform systems as a means of being able to compare how municipalities are operated. It's, at the same time, does not look at what the efficiency levels are of the various communities. So we've got a lot of considerations to make in terms of where we go with that software. But I think, at the same time, what we may also want to do is to hire a third-party consultant to assist us in the evaluation. This system should then be in place for multiple years. I would hope to see the same systems being able to survive a 15- to 20-year period. But again, the level of sophistication that's available today and the computing capabilities today are far different than they were in the mid-'80s. The integration of GIS mapping as well as the integration of human resource components, where you're dealing with time levels for vacation, sick leave, those type of things, and integrating that into the budget process would make for a much more efficient system and hopefully provide whoever's preparing the budgets with less detail work being required than what currently is required today. So we're looking at that. Other changes that we need to make on the information technology system is we have, over the past two years, upgraded the network wiring throughout the town system, and we've upgraded the server capabilities. So we've got the hardware in place to be able to accept sophisticated software for the financial management systems. The next step will be to define what financial systems software is best for this community and move forward. It's a very technical study that needs to be conducted. However, those that do not exercise due diligence have sometimes been required to replace systems prematurely with major costs impacts associated with that. And the other thing is that if you can't get to the data that you need, you can't properly manage. So this is a key component of the budget. We have shown the program for financial management systems over a multiple-year period. I will say to you that I would most likely recommend to you that it not go over multiple years, but it be accelerated to the point when, if we know what systems we want to buy for us to be able to go forward and begin the implementation of the program, and if necessary, pay for it through one-time purchases out of the undesignated fund balance. So we can look at that, and again, this is another virtue of having undesignated funds is the ability to be able to utilize those for non-recurring expenses. So this is where we're going as far as this program's concerned. If, within the next year, we can make recommendations to you, we would also make recommendations on funding allocation with the various accounts, as well as how much would be necessary if a fund balance use were appropriate and approved by the council. We also need to upgrade the email systems in the town. We need to bring email in-house. Right now, it's still managed through a third-party consultant, which means we don't own the data. Based on federal law that's been put into place, we need to be able to archive the data that goes in both on receiving and sending from any of the accounts that go through our mainframes. So with that, we hope to have that accomplished during the '12-, '13-, and '13-, '14-year. We may accelerate that if, in fact, we have the opportunity to do that if it fits within the workflow within the IT department. At this point, I'm still working with only one IT person. We're out in the market now for a second individual. So as we go forward, if we can accelerate that work plan, we will. But at this point, we're forecasting probably in the area of $660,000 over the term of the program, and again, I can only give you that as a placeholder today because we need to do the studies to be able to determine what true cost would be. Moving on to the public safety programs. Several years ago, we broke the public safety program into three elements. One- One is the computer systems. Two was their communication systems. And three was the building infrastructure reserve. Infrastructure reserve is maintenance of the facility. It is difficult to think that that building is in excess of 10 years old at this point, but it is. The computers, what we're looking at over the next year is annual contributions of between $20,000 and $35,000. Over the six-year life, be about $180,000 that would go into the computer reserve. We do not, when I show expenses by schedule only, what that means is that we're not replacing the equipment unless it has to be replaced. It's on an as-need basis. But what we can do is to anticipate, based on the number of units that we operate and the life expectancies of those units, what the potential replacement schedules will be. So the forecast by the IT personnel within the public safety function suggests that they would need about $190,000 in computer replacements and upgrades over the next six-year period. Moving on to pages 54 and 55, the communication systems. Communication systems, what we're looking at is no specific expenditures anticipated, but again, off-the-shelf equipment that has to be replaced at about $5,000 a year. We're not looking for any funding this year. We're anticipating that before June 30th of 2012, the telephone system will be replaced. There's a placeholder in the current year capital budget of around $50,000 for replacing that 11-year-old system at this time. The third element is the building and infrastructure reserve element. And again, what we're looking at is pay-as-you-go funding, and this is on page 55, a pay-as-you-go funding of approximately $80,000 over the six years. And specific projects that are anticipated at this point is the variable drive replacements on the HVAC system, as well as the chillers on the HVAC system. These are anticipated expenses based on the life of that equipment, and we're looking that that replacements would occur over the next two years. We'll continue to update this each year with the capital budget as far as any new needs that are identified. That parking lot does need to be resealed at this point, based on its age. Summary of the public safety programs. We're looking at around $325,000 in expenses over the next six years, if the schedules as presented hold true. And again, as with all capital projects, those are updated annually. We now move into the pay-as-you-go portion of the program, and that goes to page 93. And I think we can be relatively brief on these because I've touched on most of these on the long-term projects because we have budgetary transfers from the pay-as-you-go portion into the reserve funds. The first item is the Public Works Infrastructure Program. What we're looking at is a budget transfer of $625,000. And you can go back to the schedule that I presented to you earlier, and you'll see that what we're expecting to do is to spend about $1.2 million in 2012, 2013 for all the projects that I've already listed, whether it's Torrey Roads, Stony Fort, Chanuk Plains, or any of the residential roads in the Eisenhower-McArthur Boulevard area. Those improvements would be made using portions of the $625,000, as well as using reserve fund balance that exists within the Public Works Infrastructure Program at this time. Items that aren't included within that reserve fund are the equipment and facilities improvements. And on page 95 and 96, we have a narrative description of the four pieces of equipment that need to be replaced. One is an engineering vehicle at $23,000, the light dump truck at 85. And there's narrative descriptions within your capital budget. There's also a schedule on page 111, which looks out over the six-year term for all of the equipment needs that Public Works expects they will need in the highway division over the next six years. In addition to that schedule, there's one from recreation for the public grounds component for what they see for equipment needs. So that's backup information. But if we look at the various equipment, we're looking at replacing a 1998 vehicle that has 125,000 miles on it, estimated cost of $23,000. It's one of four vehicles that are used day-to-day in the operations of that engineering division. The second is the replacement of the 2001 dump truck that has 76,000 miles on it at this point. It also is equipped with a plow and the drop-in sander for snow plowing activities. Estimated cost on that is $85,000. The medium dump truck, again, a 1998 with 75,000 miles on it, this would be a new six-wheel dump truck, forecasted cost of about $139,000. Final is a pickup truck, replacing a vehicle with about 75,000 miles for $33,000. When you total all that up, it comes up to $280,000. What we're asking for in the budget is $215,000. $65,000 is currently held in the equipment reserve at this time, so that instead, we'll spend $280,000, but we'll only require $215,000 to come out of the 1213 pay-as-you-go budget. Moving on with the police department. We've talked about the computers. There's 38 workstations in service. Thirty of those units are up for the five-year replacement. And in fact, the council approved replacement for 27 of those workstations for $36,000 in November of last month. So again, what we do here is we replenish this account to be able to have appropriate dollar amounts, to be able to keep the equipment up to date, and to replace any of the equipment that isn't worth repairing. We talked about the HVAC system improvements that are going to be necessary at the police department. That includes the chiller and the HVAC controllers, as well as the variable drives. We're also looking at monies to be set aside for resurfacing of the parking lot at the public safety building. And again, as noted on the slide, there's about $56,000 currently available there to assist and offset some of those costs associated with these major capital expenses. Moving into the emergency medical services, we're looking at the 2012-13 year with approximately $30,000 that's required for the diagnostic equipment upgrades. Again, we're replacing items like EKG and defibrillators, the IV pumps, chest compression devices, those type of items. What we need to do is to have that reserve set aside so that when that equipment gets old, it can be replaced because that equipment has to be ready to operate at the time that it's needed. Again, remember, a lot of this equipment has to move from the truck to the client property. So there's a lot of movement on the equipment, as well as just the various use. We're also looking at what the useful lives are. Many of these pieces of equipment also come with service contracts. As they get old and functional obsolescence is built into these systems, the maintenance costs go up, and it's more efficient for us to replace the equipment than it could pay the maintenance costs associated with it. Over the six-year period, there'll be about $90,000 that would go into this program, of which we're looking at the $30,000 in the 1213 year. The emergency services for facilities improvements, I think everybody's aware, we operate the second station for EMS at the Public Services Building on Route 1. That building is not properly outfitted. What we're looking to do over the next several years is to put $75,000 together to allow for upgrades of the facility so that, one, we can deal with the garage space either to lower the floor or raise the ceiling so that we're not purchasing custom vehicles that will fit within that space, as well as to provide a proper day room for the operations of the crew. At this point, they're working out of a limited space. It's most important for us to be able to get these improvements completed at the South Mobile computing, again, the EMS uses the same software as the police department, the IMC, patient care report software. What we're looking at is that there's going to be new software requirements, and this will assist us in better interface with our third-party billing process. To give you an idea, right now, we're billing out and collecting in excess of a half a million dollars a year that goes to pay down the cost of operating that program. The mobile computing is very important for us to have, one, direct access to the hospital, and, two, to the public safety building itself, as well as the report writing that's necessary for the health department and the hospital. So with that, we're looking at about $12,000 in the pay-as-you-go portion of our budget. Again, we've already talked about Kingston Library. The last $25,000 is needed to be able to complete the painting on the main building itself. We've completed the first phase on dealing with the man-side roof and the shingles. Just to give you an idea of some of the peeling that's occurring, as well as some of the problems that we run into with a building that is as old as that structure. General government projects that are in our program include the replacement of a pool car. This pool car is a vehicle that's used in the building official's office at this point. There's, I believe, four vehicles that are used between the assessor's office and the building official. We're looking to replace one of those vehicles at a cost of a projection of about $19,000. Information technology on the pay-as-you-go transfer to the capital reserve is about $10,000. And we're setting aside $5,000 items for town hall maintenance and for purchase of replacement cable that's used with the town's communications department. I think council's aware, all of our buildings are tied in through the alarm system that is maintained through the communications department. What this does is provide us with dollars to be able to replace some of the aged cable that is currently being used. That completes the general fund municipal components. Again, tomorrow night, we'll deal with open space acquisitions, recreation, and senior programming. The remainder of tonight is to look at the utility funds. The utility funds with the water fund, we've got two projects this year. One is the acquisition over a two-year period of the rubber tire mini excavator. That's necessary for dealing with laterals that need to be installed. You've got to have a four-foot depth there. You need this size of a machine to be able to accomplish that. We also have to replace roofs and do considerable repairs on the pumping stations at Factory Pond. So we're looking at the roof repairs at about $20,000, and the rolling stock replacement at $40,000. This picture shows the, one of the roofs for well number one that was constructed back in 1970. That was before we had a utilities department, and in fact, the town operated with a water commission. And it was, I believe, a five-person commission, and their responsibility was to integrate, I think, four different private water systems into a town water system. One of the first projects that they had was the construction of the well fields at Factory Pond. Those wells are not in current use, but could be put online if necessary. So protection of the building envelope itself is most important for that $20,000 item. The rolling stock, again, we're looking at the purchase of a rubber tire, rubber track mini excavator that would also have a Dozer blade on it. And again, that would be used for the in-house repairs in dealing with laterals that usually have a depth in the four- to five-foot range. This is a two-year program where we'll be looking to set aside $40,000 each year for two years. It's an $80,000 piece of equipment that we would hope to acquire. Moving on to the wastewater department. Wastewater has a capital program of $307,000, and that's on page 99 of your document. The, I want to make it clear that the $307,000 is the cost associated with all three regional partners. South Kingstown's share of the $307,000 would be about $178,000. As we move along, cost shares are how we pay for capital improvements. Anything that has to deal with the wastewater facility itself in Narragansett is based on South Kingstown paying 36.7% of those costs, Narragansett 44, and the University 19. Conversely, when we deal with Silver Lake Pump Station, Narragansett has no cost because none of their wastewater passes through that, so it's shared by South Kingstown and the university. Same with Kingston, and you can see the varying percentages. That's why of the total $307,000, we're only looking at South Kingstown rate-based being responsible for $178,000. The other cost shares, URI's at about 106, and Narragansett's at about $25,000. Wastewater projects. First item is the Silver Lake Pump Station. We require, based on the flows that are going through that facility, to add a fourth pump. That's operated since 1976 with three pumps. This will be a fourth pump that needs to be added on for peak demands and for backup purposes. It's going to require extensive piping and electrical work, and we'll end up hiring both a construction contractor and hiring an engineer to be able to prepare the bid specs. We're looking at about $210,000, of which South Kingstown's share would be $138,000. Kingston Pump Station, we're looking that we need to replace the generator. I think the council will recall, this past year, the council approved the replacement of the generator at the Silver Lake Pump Station. This generator also needs to be replaced. It's now 30 years old. The schedule for replacement would be the 1415 year. In the 1213 year, we're looking only at $17,000 in funding. The remainder of the dollars would come in the 1314 and 1415 years. So it's a three-year funding cycle, and the generator will be replaced in the third year. The projected cost for that generator replacement right now is pegged at about $290,000. At the wastewater treatment plant, the clarifier isolation valves need, valve needs to be replaced. That's the, that allows us to isolate between the secondary clarifiers and the chlorine contact chambers. That's also a schedule for replacement based on the age of the existing valve. That's over 30 years old. Again, we're having difficulty with continued operation of that. Cost on that replacement's about $30,000, of which we would be paying about $11,000. In the collection system, there is a, the interceptor pipe runs along the Sogatucket River. That has been examined with a camera. It does need to have a high-velocity jet cleaning done, which is beyond the capabilities of the department because that's all under pressure. What we would do is to have a third-party contract for about $20,000 to go in and to jet-clean that pipeline. That transmits all of the waste materials that are coming in from the Kingston Pump Next item is the engineering divisions. They currently operate with four vehicles. They want to replace one with 85,000 miles, estimated Estimated cost, $25,000, of which about $9,200 would come from South Kingston rate base. Again, none of the costs associated with water, wastewater, or transfer station come from property taxes. All of them come exclusively from the rate base themselves or the system users. We're also looking at a contribution of $5,000 toward the GIS scanner that needs to be, scanner plotter that needs to be replaced. So that, that's why we're showing the $5,000. And that's 100% our cost, because it's not being used by either the university's purposes or the, or Narragansett. The final two pages on the presentation is the presentation of the final capital improvement pay-as-you-go portion. We've gone through all of the items on the capital program, and I can answer any questions that council may have, or if you open it up to the public, I'd be glad to answer those questions as well.
Thank you, Steve. At this time, we're going to accept any questions from the town council? Jim?
Well, Steve, the, with all the sharing that we do, URI, Stony Fort Road, Plains Road, is there any way that the state and the school could contribute towards those improvements of those roads, considering they're probably a huge percentage of the use?
We certainly can ask. I'm not sure we're going to see any contribution from URI. The state won't touch it, because it isn't a state, state road. We are looking at a portion of that, I believe, with the town of North Kingston, because a portion of that road, we own to the center line of the road. North Kingston, John's been in contact with North Kingston. You may want to just give them an idea on that. Use the mic, please, Mike, John.
Yeah, the manager's correct. The southern portion of Stony Fort Road is entirely in South Kingston from Route 138 to the North Kingston Town Line, but from the North Kingston Town Line to Slocombe Road, half of that road is in North Kingston, half is in South Kingston. So we've already discussed that with North Kingston. We're trying to finish up the plans at this point to give them a closer budget number, but initial discussions indicate that they have, or will be able to fund their portion. We're certainly not, I'm not encouraging or recommending that we, you know, reconstruct their part of the road, but we have had those discussions with North Kingston.
Is there, John, while you're up there, is there an access off Slocombe Road up to Route 2? Is there, is there another escape for the URI students?
Well, I think a lot of people, a lot of the students go Old North Road to Stony Fort to Slocombe, and then they come out, there's a number of ways they can come out onto Route 2, or continue all the way out to Sherman Town Road, or out by where I guess the old carriage inn used to be in North Kingston. So I think a lot of the students trying to avoid the traffic go the, the supposed back way to URI.
There's no easier way to get them over to Route 2, rather than all those other back roads?
I know the, you know, the university's made efforts to try to encourage the students to go, you know, out Plains Road to the ministerial intersection, and then 138 to Route 2 northbound, rather than trying to get them to go through the village of Kingston.
I think one of the things we're hopeful for is that the university will agree to take over ownership of Plains Road from just north of Ryan Center at Flag Road, and be able to do improvements to that road that would provide greater incentives for people that are going back to Providence to use Route 2, rather than going up 138.
Further questions here at the table? Jim?
I'm just happy to catch you on the news tonight. Representative McNamara put in a bill on this car revaluation issue going on throughout the state. They interviewed the Pawtucket mayor, saying their $14 million, he expects if the bill passed, his bill passed, they'd lose at least 10%. Have you had a chance to look at any of this yet?
As I mentioned at the initial budget hearing, Jim, that is a concern of mine, because there's really two components there. One is that if they were to lessen the value on the taxable roll, that's one component where we would lose dollars. However, if they were to come up with a uniform rate, it may in fact have less impact on us. Because if our existing rate at the 1871 were to be a uniform rate at $25, even if we were to lose some of the value, we would still, we would, we would have to see exactly what the bill would yield for us to be able to do an impact study on that. And right now, I think that the motor vehicles are worth about 5% of our, of our tax base. So it is an important consideration as we go forward as to what, what the state does with that. I think there is a need for creating uniformity on how that system is managed, yet at the same time, the state cannot just simply prevent the towns from being able to collect taxes, because all they're doing is forcing the taxes onto the real estate base unless there's a, a source of revenue that they're going to replace it with, or the municipalities are going to have to look at program cuts.
Yes, speaking of uniformity, is it possible that we'd wind up with a $30 or $40 rate averaged throughout the state, so cities and towns wouldn't be competing?
I would suspect not. I think that while there's a number of communities that are plus 60, Jim, I think that the predominant number is probably in the $20 to $30 range. So I mean, if they were looking for uniformity, I think that it would be closer to that. The problem that that poses is based on the representation within the legislature, is the communities that have the higher tax rates have, for the most part, the most votes in the general assembly. So if those persons were to decrease rates from 60 to $30 and reduce the assessment values that were associated with it, there would be considerable difficulty for those communities.
Okay, and the last question, you mentioned that the undesignated fund balance for the town, are the schools included too, that you've completed through June 30, 2011?
Yeah, this has been completed, as they showed the other night, there, I believe it was around $2.3 million, Jim?
Yeah, I was confused at your response to someone, because I didn't know if you were saying the unaudited part was their guesswork for the June 2012 number, or I guess I thought that was part of the 2011.
No, I think that the number, the number escapes me, but I thought it was around 2.3 that they, that she had. That number is probably within, within $15,000 or $20,000 of what it would, what it would be as in the audit statement. And you should be seeing the audit within the next two weeks.
All right, so at that time, we didn't have the audited number? At the time of that meeting?
I believe they did have, I mean, the audit, for the most part, was completed. The only thing would have been any outstanding things that needed to be revised, but there would have been a very limited adjustment that would have been made on that.
That's what I would have thought. Okay, all right. Thanks, Al.
Kathy?
Just to kind of fix that, I mean, the generator.
Is the mic on, Kathy?
Oh, sorry. The generator part of the budget that you have, I think, targeted up for 2015. And as you're saying, we really have no backup here, electricity in the town hall.
Well, we do have backup. We have a, we have a generator that is a truck-mounted generator that can be used. It's pigtailed at each of the different pumping stations that we have, so that if we had an extended power outage, we would need to be able to service each of our pumping stations that don't have generators. We would be using the vehicle-mounted generator. In fact, in that last storm that we had, Narragansett ran into difficulty, and we let them borrow that generator to be able to run Weider Street. So we would have the, the ability to be able to maintain it on a temporary basis. This would just provide permanency if, in fact, the main generator were to go down. But the redundancy is, is in place for us to be able to meet the schedule that we have there.
Okay, so you have, you copy that? It just seems like you've seen so many storms, and it just seems to me that weather patterns seem to be changing, and Connecticut seemed to get hit last time very hard. I just am concerned about that particular item.
Again, based on what I've gotten from staff, I think that we can accommodate it. However, we do want to put the permanent solution into place. You know, years ago, we had only two pumping stations. They were, you know, the two principals. Now, I think at this point, what are we up to, 17? How many? So I mean, it's a case where each of those has reserve capacity within it if there's, if there's no electric generation, but we have to stay ahead of that to ensure that we don't end up with backup. But at this point, I think that we can accommodate it. The other problem that we run into is that the fourth pump at Silver Lake is a higher priority as far as concern about being able to deal with the volume of materials that goes through it than the concern for the redundancy on the generator. Because trying to get that money out of rate base without it requiring a major spike in the cost of, of the wastewater fees is difficult, and that's why we've tried to string it out over the several-year period. And the other thing, too, is that it's not something that's going to be done overnight, because there's going to have to be engineering detail developed on how that would be incorporated into that facility.
Holly?
Steve, the roads that you have, are planning to do, are, is this the same schedule as has been in the past? These roads were on the schedule to do, or have you had to change because of breakdown?
I think that John reviews it on an annual basis, in terms of where we've got complaints or where he's gotten serious concerns with the road. And there are going to be roads that jump up ahead of other roads based on that schedule, but I think what, what he's attempting to do on a yearly basis is to say where, where's the highest priorities. So yeah, they, there are changes from what has been there in the past, but I think a lot of it depends on what the best information is at the time that he's putting the budget document together.
Yes, it does.
Which road was that, Kathy?
Stony Fort? That's terrible.
Well, and the other thing, too, is that remember, the Stony, Stony Fort is, is a problem, but when we start dealing with the roads, we can't just deal one dimensionally. We're dealing with the drainage. When we deal with Torrey Road, we've got to do drainage improvements on Torrey Road before we can really do the, the road improvements. And because Torrey Road's topography is really the ledge that actually exists there, it's going to be very difficult for that road project to be completed. So while we've got a very ambitious schedule there, I will be very pleased if we get 80% of it completed. The beauty of having the Capital Reserve Fund is the fact that the monies stay there and can be recommitted the following year based on new prioritization.
Further questions here at the table? I just had a few, Steve. The Schneider Electric that you mentioned on page 50, I believe there states that they're going to be finishing their audit in December. So is there an update with recommendations coming soon to the town council? And with their recommendations, which funds will be appropriated to, you know, light bulbs, whatever their recommendation is?
As I mentioned, I think that what I'm looking to do is, the initial report that we received in had an energy estimate that was exceedingly high, because it took what the existing energy use per kilowatt hour was, and forecasted going up 3% per year for a 10-year period. What I had them do is to revise that, and I'm waiting for the final report on that, to what the actual energy cost will be based on the new contract that we signed that's frozen for three years. What that does is it changes the buyback period based on the energy savings that are going to occur. Many of the change, many of the proposals that they have have capital costs that will have a buyback that exceeds 15 years. If the improvement doesn't have a shelf life of more than 15 years, it's not advantageous for us to address that. What I need to do is to be able to get a final report from them, then be able to take all of the items from soup to nuts that they have suggested could save energy, and present a proposal possibly that would say, we should do these items, and we should get the return on investment sufficient to be able to pay the debt that would be associated with it. And then we would have to determine, would we incur debt? Would we use just the $300,000 that we have available through the, through the federal program? Or would we use dollars in reserve in wastewater or water or the guild to be able to pay for those types of things? And so it's going to take, it's going to take some work for us to be able to look at the program. Again, it's outside of the capital budget, yet at the same time, some of the cost presentations that they made, particularly for the schools, were exceedingly high, and some of them weren't directly related to energy as much as they were to technology. So we need to be able to deal with that from a, the company has done what they should do. They've given us every possible potential savings that's there, regardless of the buyback period. What they're suggesting is that any of the program that they're presenting, in the bottom line, will save at least 12%. What we need to do is to determine whether we agree that that 12% is there, because the one thing I don't want to do is to spend dollars and then have to cede money from the general fund or any of the other utility funds to offset where the energy savings don't occur. So that, that program may take us a while. I'm expecting to get, hopefully, their final draft sometime next week, but my time commitments to be able to look at that and really be able to put together a package in conjunction with the schools may, may take us a while.
Thank you. The second question that I had is the AED units that we have. When will they need to be replaced? You know, and I'm not sure if that's in the answer that, you know, is available.
Well, Mike, Mike has been out inspecting those within the last couple of weeks. Mike, you want to try to address that question?
I actually just dealt with that right before Christmas, did out, went out, did a survey on most of them. Most of the units are in good shape, and the hot association, which pretty much puts out the guidelines that the units are programmed by, kind of revises on a five-year cycle. Right now, I think we're in good shape, so we've got a few more years before we have to worry about them not being able to be reprogrammed. So I think we're okay, other than routine maintenance and replacement of pads and batteries.
I think the major thing is not so much whether or not they're in working order, but Mike is going, has suggested us getting the training programs going to make sure that people know how to use them. While, while it's intuitive, if you have somebody in an emergency situation, it would be nice if they had a dry run on it before they actually needed to use it. So what we're trying to do is to deal with staff in terms of ensuring that we have the training on that, as well as with, with, with new people that have come to work for the town since they were installed.
Thank you. And another question that I had was, I believe, in prior years, has it been like 27 miles or, I don't know how many miles of roads that we've tried to keep updated and repaired? So are we working with a comparable number where we have been in the past? Do we know approximately how many miles of roads?
The plan that we began last year, and again, that was based on federal money being made available through the stimulus program, is we did a lot of work, whether it was at Liberty Lane, as well as Schoolhouse Road. But when you look at the town system, you've got about 160 miles of road, which means you've got 320 lane miles that you're responsible for. If you assume that, that road maintenance is, on a proper road, is every 10 years, you know, do the math in terms of us doing about 16 miles, whole roads, a year. We're not anywhere close to that. We would probably be in the area of seven, seven to eight miles that we're able to care for, and, you know, we're still spending a good deal of money in terms of upkeep on the stone seal program, on those roads that we can maintain with the stone seal. But as we get greater traffic utilization on But as we get greater traffic utilization on many of the stone seal roads, they're not holding up the stone seal anymore, and that's why we're looking at the overlay requirement.
Thank you. Any further questions here at the table? I just, I have a question, not to embarrass anyone. I see a face in the audience that I think is one of our town staff, that I'm not sure if it's our new person at the wastewater treatment. And maybe if you could come to the mic and introduce yourself. I don't believe we have formally met. Welcome. I thought it was you, but I wasn't sure.
Thank you, yes. Hi, I'm Kathy Perez. I'm working at the wastewater plant, and it's a pleasure working for the town.
Thank you. Welcome.
We call her our new bishop.
I would, I would try to change that verbiage to the queen. Okay, before we move to the audience, do we have any further questions here at the Okay, the microphone is open for any questions from the public. This is a public work session. I guess you did such a great job that there are no questions.
I think I put them all to sleep.
Any further questions here at the table? I just want to personally thank, you know, Steve for putting this together. I look at this every year as this giant puzzle with all of these different parts. And every time I listen to this presentation, I learn something more. And I can't thank the staff enough, all of you, for being here and giving Steve the feedback to put this giant puzzle together. We do have January 4th, our second capital improvement program, and we also have our joint town, I'm sorry, January 5th. And then we also have January 11th, our joint town council school committee. So without any further ado, any other questions? All right. Meeting is adjourned. Page 40.